Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and in-person attendance limitations. This will be a virtual public hearing and participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, an online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and in-person attendance limitations. This will be a virtual public hearing and participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentation to the committee using WebEx, an online event that is being moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching it on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting either by their computer, phone or tablet app, or by telephone. All participants are automatically muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members are participating by video. Any registered participants will be participating by audio only. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. For all those who are waiting online, please ensure that you have called in with the phone number that you originally registered with. If you call in with a different number, you will not be able to speak on that item. To ensure audio clarity, I suggest that you do not use the speakerphone function on your telephones. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishna Bay, the Chipewa, the Hudnashoni, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Matisse peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto was covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the city of Toronto was called to order. My name is Alan Smithies and I will chair today's meeting. Joining us on the panel today are Stan Kumerick, Michie McCloskey, Neil Palmer, and Sophia Ruddock. City staff are also present. Adam Borsella, Philip Carvelina, and Angelica Zortos. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone attending today who wants to receive a copy of the committee's decision must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address because Committee of Adjustment and the T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the committee's decision, it may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the committee's decision. The hearing procedure is as follows. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation if desired. If the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak on the item. The committee may ask questions and undertake the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, is given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five-minute limit. When addressing the committee, please state clearly your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters described in the application. The applicant or agent proceeds first and will make their presentation to the committee. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. To ensure that a revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes, the committee may decide to defer the application if it is substantially revised. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application are invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the previous speakers. This marks the end of discussion on the item. The application is then taken into committee for a decision. Are there any committee members who have a conflict of interest they would like to declare? No? Okay, thank you. We're now on item number 28, 5134 to 5138 Dundas Street West. I have two people registered to speak. The agent is Sarah Craig. Are you there, madam?
Yes, here.
Yes, Ms. Craig, can I get your full name and address, please?
Yep, Sarah Craig, 123 Front Street West.
Okay, thank you, madam. We have some material on file indicating that an email dated the 7th of July indicating that you'd like to ask for a deferral because we do have reports from City Planning dated the 8th of July, which was recommending deferral, and one from Transportation Services dated the 5th of July, which was also asking for a deferral. So are you requesting a deferral?
Yes, we've received those recommendations and spoken to staff and agree with the recommendation to defer until the next committee hearing.
Okay, thank you. I have one person registered to speak. I need to check with him to see if he's okay with that deferral. I have a Charles McLeod. Are you there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm here, Charles McLeod.
Yes, Mr. McLeod, do you have an objection to the applicant's request for a deferral?
No, I do not. I have a question. Is what, if anything, do I need to do to make sure that I'm kept informed of any changes to the application or date of any future committee meeting?
What will happen, sir, is once he meets with city staff, there will undoubtedly be changes to the application, and if that triggers additional variances or modifications to the variance, a new notice will be sent out to the public, and you'll have the opportunity to comment on that revised application.
Will I automatically get a copy of that notice?
You will get a copy of that notice when the applicant has submitted, after the applicant has submitted his revised application, but you will be notified.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Craig, I'll just ask the committee for a motion with respect to a deferral. Can I get a motion from the committee, please? Mr. Kumerick?
I'll move motion to defer so the applicant can consult with Transportation and Planning staff.
Thank you, Mr. Kumerick. Can I have someone to second that? Ms. Ruddock seconds. All those in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Madam, your application's been unanimously deferred until the next available meeting so that you can meet with City Planning and Transportation Services. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have, the next application is 384 Rimmelton Avenue. I have one person registered to speak. That is Franco Romano. Are you there, Mr. Romano?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Franco Romano, Action Planning Consultants, 2095 Autumn Breeze, Fort Credit.
Through you, Mr. Chair, there's also an additional speaker, Hillary and David Lay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Romano, there is a, we have an email report from City Planning dated the 25th of June. They indicate that they have no objection to your application. We have a report from Development Engineering dated the 6th of August. They have no objections to your application, subject to standard conditions. There's a report from Urban Forestry that recommends refusing due to a possible removal of a city-owned linden tree, so you may want to address that in your presentation to the committee. We have one other person registered to speak, sir, so if you'd like to give the committee a brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to refer to my presentation slide. It's just a one-page. And while I do that, I will, while that comes up. Thank you kindly. So this property is located at a corner, it's a northwest corner of Delta Street and Rimmelton Avenue. It's an existing detached residential property, and you'll see on the site plan that I've outlined in blue where the existing dwelling is located. And in thick black line, I've overlaid the proposed semi-detached dwelling. So the proposal is for a semi-detached dwelling, and you'll see that semi-detached dwelling generally overlaps where the existing dwelling is. Couple of points to note. The rear yard setback that exists is basically the same rear yard setback that is proposed. The west side yard setback to the neighbor is currently 1.8 meters, and the proposal is to bring it to 2.3 meters, so larger than what currently exists and larger than the 1.5 meters that the zoning bylaw requires. You'll see lot frontage and lot area variances. The lot frontage is 8.06 meters, and there is a listing there of 18 meters as required, but 18 meters is for the entire semi-detached residential building. So that's basically nine meters for each one-half of a semi-detached. So the proposal is less than a one-meter difference from what is permitted as a semi-detached, and the lot area has a similar provision. There are 665 square meters is for the entire building, but 332.5 square meters is for one-half of a semi-detached dwelling. In the lower left of this graphic, you're going to see that the property is located within an area where there is a diversity of lot sizes. Everything that is colored is smaller than what the subject site is today. So the subject site today is one of the larger, largest lots in the neighborhood and in the surrounding area, and we'll see that lots that are less than nine meters in frontage are represented by 30% of the properties within that graphic there. And within the neighborhood, it's actually a little more than that, it's about 40%, lots that are 7.62 meters or smaller represent most of the semi-detached dwellings within this area. And so the proposal at 8.06 meters would be one of the larger semi-detached dwellings within the area and within the immediate context. So the proposal is basically to replace the existing building with one other building, and that's to semi-detached. In terms of the tree, the tree in the front facing Rimmelton is actually on private property. It may be a border tree because it seems to touch the property line, but I did submit, we got that comment from Urban Forestry on the last day of being able to provide submission materials. I will note that Urban Forestry did not provide any comments when the initial applications were filed and processed in 2019, so this comment comes as a surprise. But I did submit material yesterday that shows that for the corner lot, the driveway condition can come off of Delta Street and no longer interfere with that tree should Urban Forestry not wish that tree to be removed. So I'm confident that the proposal can continue and be reflective and respectful of the surrounding context with a low-profile semi-detached dwelling and happy to have the Urban Forestry conditions of approval attached. So subject to any questions, sir, I submit that the applications represent good planning and satisfy all tests and consent criteria.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Romano. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I'll go to the next person on the list. I have a David Lai, L-A-I. Are you there, sir?
Yeah, that is correct, yes.
Yes, sir, can I get your full name and address, please?
Sure, it's David Lai, and address is 188 Delta Street.
Okay, thank you, sir. If you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Yeah, no problem. It was just a couple of questions, really. The tree was one of them, which was addressed there. Secondly, there is a retaining wall that is a part of this property that runs along probably about half the side of our driveway, and from our previous conversations with the previous owners, it was a part of this property. So we wanted to ask, and what would happen to this retaining wall during the construction phase and the rebuild, and whether or not it would stay there, and what would be erected there, because based off the plans, we were unable to identify what would happen.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll ask Mr. Romano. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? No, I'll go back to Mr. Romano. Mr. Romano, you heard the comments from Mr. Lay. Have you had the opportunity to, is there an issue with the retaining wall there?
No, sir, the retaining wall is within the proposed soft landscaped rear yard. So there's no changes, there are going to be no changes to that grating in that backyard there, and you're not allowed to make changes there, so that's going to remain the soft landscaping. There's actually a tree, there's a tree, there's a tree actually in the backyard of the subject property that's within that location there, so that tree is expected to remain.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kumerick?
Finally, the application meets the four tests, and I would like to recommend approval, subject to forestry conditions 1, 2, and 3. 2 and 3, I believe, were requested by forestry in lieu of 5, which is refusal, and 1 is just to try to attempt to protect the city tree, which I believe Mr. Romano has already indicated he's willing to do. Also, subject to development and engineering usual conditions that go with the severance.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Kumerick. Someone to second that motion? Ms. McCloskey seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries. Mr. Romano, your application's been approved, subject to development, engineering, and urban forestry conditions.
Thank you kindly. Appreciate the committee's kind attention. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Next application is 95 Bernice Crescent, 9599 Bernice Crescent. I have two people registered to speak. I have the agent, Ida Evangelista. Are you there, Ms. Evangelista?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair members. Ida Evangelista, on behalf of the owners of 95, 99, and 101 Bernice Crescent.
Okay, thank you, madam. I note that there is an email report from City Planning regarding your application. It's dated May 5th. The planning has no objections to the consent or the minor variance applications. There's a report from the 19th of October 2021 from Development Engineering that has no objections to your application, subject to the standard consent conditions, and there's also recommended conditions from Urban Forestry. We have one person registered to speak, madam, so if you'd like to give the committee a brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Most definitely, Mr. Chair. So if you would take a look at the submission, going back to 1912, this area was developed with 25-foot lots. Excuse me, sorry. Through the years, what's happened, there, in these particulars, in these three lots, the lot lines became askew. Not too sure how it's happened over the years, but it was all discovered when one of the properties, I believe 95 Bernice, was deemed unsafe. We had to get a new survey, and we found that they were no longer 25-foot lots. So the intent here today is to just reestablish those lot lines and putting them back to being 25-foot frontages as consistent with the plan of subdivision going back to 1912. And along with that, we will be building three new homes. We have worked quite extensively with planning throughout the many months of this application process, and the variances that we now have in front of you, we do not have a height variance nor a main wall height variance. We have, what we've done, we've designed a mansard roof style to have that appearance of a two-story dwelling. This is a very eclectic area. We have bungalows, two stories. We have some, you know, we do have some homes with three stories where the third story is in the roofline, be it on Eileen or around the corner. And the variances that we are asking for, we don't have a garage, so we do need frontyard parking, which is also consistent with this neighborhood. Some have garages at the back and share a mutual drive, and a good majority have frontyard parking. And if you refer to my submission, it will tell, it will show you the variances that we are requesting. The one variance that, we do have the interior side yard setback. There is a setback from the front porch to the lot line. So that's the variances that we're asking for. We do not have length, depth, height, main wall height, nor do we have a landscaping variance. So everything that we have, that we are doing is just basically to go back and reestablish what we had in this particular neighborhood. And as you can see, we've done a color sketch that shows what they look like, what the lot lines are now existing, and how we would like to reestablish them. And, Mr. Chair, I conclude that this does, this application, or these applications, do satisfy the test. We have met with and dealt with planning. They are satisfied, ECS is also, and we are in acceptance of forestry conditions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Evangelista. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you. I have the next speaker on the list, Kim Vicki Wong.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, committee.
Yes, hello, madam. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, my full name is Kim Feng Vicki Wong, and the address is 93 Bernice Crescent, speaking towards 95 Bernice Crescent.
Okay, thank you, madam. If you could give us your thoughts on this application?
Yes, I have primarily three main concerns about this. So the first concern is regarding Ms. Ida's presentations on the lot lines. So I was wondering, well, where she mentioned that it would be 25. I was wondering, is that between 95 and 99, 99 and 101, or is that lot line between us and 95? And the second concern would be regarding the process of building. I just wanted to make sure that our safety concerns are met so that there's no issues with regards to the gas, electricity, breaking into our gates, any form of our property, our fences, our trees, our water supply, so any of that supply would not be affected for us, so that is really important during the building process. So during the process of building those dwellings, I would like to make sure that the safety, there are no safety concerns for both the people and the property. And the third concern would be regards to, I hope they follow this plan and they build everything in accordance to the spending, in accordance with the city bylaws, because we have had a bad experience with the demolition process where they have broken into our property before, so that would be a concern. So I hope they adhere to the city bylaws. And thank you for taking the time to listen to my concerns.
Okay, thank you, madam. I'll just have the agent address your concerns. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Okay, I'll go back to Ms. Evangelista. You heard the previous speaker, if you'd like to respond to her comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, absolutely. So the lot lines are within 95, 99, and 101. That's where the lot lines have become askew. And the lot line between 93 and 95 is, will not be touched. It remains as is. It happened in between those three lots, so 93 will be okay with her lot line. Also, there will be a surveyor that will be out on the property and reestablishing all the lot lines once we get to the building stage. Insofar as the building process, absolutely, and I would recommend to, and I will actually visit the owner of 93, just to, you know, go around and take pictures. My apologies for any mishaps that have happened in the past, but I will have a conversation with the owners and just to make sure that everything is fenced off, the safety, utmost safety for the area, for the neighborhood, and for you and your home. And I will reach out to you privately. I'll come out during the week and we'll have a conversation, and I'll let the owners know.
Okay, thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kumerick?
I would like to find the application to be, to meet the four tests, and it can make sense to try to re-standardize the lot sizes. So on that basis, I'd like to move approval. I would like to, well, let me give the usual conditions, and then I don't want to add another condition. So forestry conditions 2 and 3 would be, would be subject to, and also subject to the usual engineering division conditions that go with severance. I also like to, just to assure the next-door neighbor that we tie this to be substantially in accordance with the drawings submitted, if the applicant is okay with that.
Okay, thank you. Someone to second Mr. Kumerick's motion? Ms. McCloskey seconds. All those in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Ms. Evangelista, your application's been approved, subject to development, engineering, and urban forestry conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair members. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. Now on item number 31, which is 152 Sheldon Avenue. I have one person registered to speak. That is Graham Barrett. He is the agent. Sir, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon, committee members.
Mr. Barrett, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, Mr. Barrett, can you speak up?
I'm speaking as loud as I can.
It's hard to hear you, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm speaking directly to my microphone.
That's better, okay. I'm going through your file. I noticed there's a couple of number of staff comments on file. There's one from City Planning dated the 21st of June. They're recommending your application be refused. There's a one from Development Engineering dated the 26th of May 2021. They have no objection to your application, subject to the standard consent conditions. And we also have recommended conditions from Urban Forestry. I just wanted to ask, sir, would you like to defer your application to discuss it further with City Planning, or would you like to proceed today?
No, I've been instructed to proceed today.
Okay, well, then, if you'd like to, if you'd like to give the committee a presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal, and especially with respect to city, in light of City Planning's comments?
Sir, gladly. I'd submitted some presentation materials. If those can be pulled up on screen, that'd be great.
Sir, you may want to speak up. It's really hard to hear you.
I'm sorry, sir, I'm speaking directly into my microphone, and I sound terrified, so I'm not sure what the issue might be. Just a moment, let me see if I can increase my microphone. Would it be better if I called in?
Sounds better now.
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can't hear you, sir. You keep, you're cutting in and out. You sound like you're talking in the bottom of a tin can.
Mr. Barrett, perhaps it is better if you call in, and then I can unmute you from the telephone, because we're having difficulties hearing you in council chambers.
Sure. Okay, just one moment, and I will do that. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barrett?
Mr. Barrett, can I?
Yes, I'm here. Let me disconnect from the other meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's better. Uh, committee members?
Okay, apologies, I'm not sure.
Okay? Okay. Okay, Mr. Barrett, can you, can you start your presentation, please?
Sir, gladly. Um, have you got those presentation materials up on screen? I, I can no longer see.
Okay, please go ahead.
Okay, so the first couple pages of the presentation materials that I've submitted are the site as existing, and one can see that it's in dire need of an update. The next slide shows the rear yard and the building in behind. Um, you'll note that, uh, this area is made up of a variety of built form, particularly when we go into the next page, there is a large apartment building to the south and another few three-story buildings across the street. So there are quite a, quite a bit of variety around here, um, including detached single-family dwellings on this block, as you scroll through these couple of, uh, pictures that I've included. So this is a proposal to sever the lot and build two new detached single-family dwellings. Um, you can see a draft R plan, um, in my, in my presentation materials as well. Um, now, many lots in this immediate area have been severed with variances granted to permit reduced lot frontages and areas. On the following slide, which is page eight, I've included, um, a list of other approvals within 500 meters of 152 Sheldon, sorted from smallest to largest lot area, and we fall squarely in the middle. And we also see numerous variances for lot frontages, which are the same as what we're proposing, which is 7.62 meters, where 12 is required. You go to the following page, um, we have many comparable variances for gross floor area close by, and, uh, we're proposing point seven five times the area of the lot, where point four is the maximum. And there are 11 approvals, um, greater than what's being proposed here. The following slide is the same for lot coverage. We fall squarely in the middle. And, uh, I've done the same for height, measured to midpoint, and building length, and so on. So the variances that are being proposed here are very much in line with what else has been happening in the area. And careful consideration has been given to that, um, when proposing this application. So to speak to the staff report, um, the planning staff report, I'm aware they're recommending refusal of this application. I have attempted to work with them along the way to come up with a solution that worked for all concerned. Um, however, we're unable to come to an understanding. Essentially, planning staff had informed me that they would prefer to see semi-detached homes on this site, but the owners would prefer to build detached dwellings, and the lots can support them, particularly in light of the other comparable variances in the immediate vicinity and the variety in built form on the street. Planning staff had also indicated that they would support detached dwellings if we were to reduce the building length by one meter for each home and comply with the 17-meter maximum. But the owners felt that this would compromise the amount of livable space being created, and preferred to proceed with the plans as they are. And, um, I'm of the opinion that these dwellings will provide a sympathetic transition from the two-story semi-detached dwellings to the north, to the larger three-story apartment building to the south. And shaving off one meter of length at the rear really wouldn't have done much to change the impact of these homes on the streetscape or the character of the area. So I'm still not entirely sure why shaving off one meter would address that concern. And I were of the opinion that semi-detached dwellings here would have resulted in a larger built form with more potential for scale and massing issues than two detached homes. Also, I personally wrote a letter and sent it out to the 12 closest homes on Sheldon, offering to chat if there were any questions or concerns, and I haven't heard from any of the neighbors, so it would appear that nobody is in opposition. I'm also aware of the urban forestry conditions, and we're fine with them. The two city trees in front can and will be maintained. The driveway at 152B Sheldon, or part one, was modified to ensure that the tree in front would survive. An arborist report has been prepared and submitted, and, uh, applications to urban forestry will be necessary. But, um, to sum up, these will be two modest, reasonably sized, four-bedroom homes. The variances are minor, and, uh, I believe this passes the four tests, as much has been done in the area that's quite similar. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and thank you for your time.
Yes, Mr. Barrett, could I ask you a question with respect to, architecturally, the, the height of the proposed buildings on these two severed lots? I noticed that just a block over, which is on, uh, Luness and Horner, at the, uh, be the northwest corner, there's townhouses there. What is, how, and they're in a similar architectural fashion, it would appear with respect to the garage on the ground floor, and then staggered, almost like a three-story appearance, but they're two-story. Do you know what the height of those townhomes on Luness are? And what, how do they, how would they compare to the buildings you're proposing?
Um, well, I'm not sure of the exact, I'm not sure of the exact address that you'd be talking about on Luness. I mean, there's many height variances on Luness that I've highlighted on, uh, page 11. We see, these are all height to the midpoint. The height of the proposed dwellings that we're proposing is 9.46 meters total, and the overall height maximum in this area is 10 meters. So I'm seeing midpoint heights on Luness here, at number 17, at nine meters. Um, at 52, 8.61 meters, which is the same as we're proposing. Let's see, 23 Luness, something 8.58 to the midpoint, and 65 Luness, 7.95 to the midpoint. I do not have overall height, so unfortunately, for those.
Okay, thank you. Does the, uh, committee have any questions to the speaker? Mr. Cumerick?
Oh, just, um, if you were doing a semi here, two, or one building with two semis, would you not be closer on your GFI numbers then?
Um, I mean, I don't have plans to refer to throwing semis.
But theoretically, you would be, okay, but I, 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 I think planning's concern is, is not so much, uh, the character, but, uh, in terms of precedent setting and numbers, and I, I think I know where they're coming from, but, okay, thanks.
Uh, to answer your question, when I spoke with planning staff, they did feel that semis would be more appropriate in character on this block, which I found somewhat confusing as there is such a variety of built form on this block. There are three-story apartment buildings, there are semis, there are single-family detached homes. And I believe the design is tasteful and suitable, and, and will fit in nicely on the streetscape.
Well, fair enough. My, my, but my first reaction to seeing this too was that it would be, it would make more sense as a, as a semi to transition to the other uses next to it, but that was just my own reaction to it as well.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions to the speaker? Uh, we have no other deputants, so if I could get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Palmer?
Um, yeah, I'm going to recommend approval. Uh, I think that the, uh, applications represent good planning. I think the consents meet the requirements in the Planning Act. Um, I think the minor variances requested meet the four tests in the Planning Act, so, uh, I'll move for approval. And, uh, subject to the forestry conditions one and three, and I'll just tie them generally to the site plans that were submitted.
Uh, there's also the standard consent conditions from Development Engineering?
Yes, yes, subject to standard conditions from Development Engineering as well.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Someone to second Mr. Palmer's motion? Mr. Cumerick seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to development, engineering conditions, and urban forestry conditions.
Great, thank you very much, and, uh, apologies again for the audio issues there.
Oh, no problem, thank you, sir. Item number 32, 2996 Weston Road. I have one person registered to speak, that is the agent, Paul Tobia. Are you there, sir?
I am, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, committee members.
Yes, hello, sir. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, Paul Tobia, from Weston Consulting. Address is 201 Millway Avenue, Suite 19, Vaughan, Ontario.
Okay, thank you, sir. I note there's, uh, a report from, two reports from City Planning, one dated the 30th of June, 2021, and one dated the 25th of February, an email, uh, they have no objections to your application. We have, um, Development Engineering, uh, report of the 6th of April, which they have no objections to, uh, your application. And there's also a, uh, recommended condition from Ravine and Natural Features Protection. I just wanted to ask, sir, if you had the opportunity to, uh, read those reports?
I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. It's pretty clear what you're asking for in your application. Uh, is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material that we have before us today?
Uh, to you, Mr. Chair, only that our opinion is, uh, the proposed severance represents good planning, consistent with the policy framework, and will contribute to additional house, residential housing supply within the city.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Cumerick?
I'll, uh, move approval, um, subject to transportation engineering and ravine standard conditions.
Okay, and, yeah, the, the development engineering standard conditions?
Yes, that's what I thought I just said, sorry.
And thank you. And the ravine and natural features protection. Okay, uh, someone to second that motion? Ms. McCloskey seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to development, engineering, and, uh, ravine and natural features protection can, conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're on, uh, now, Eight Yorkley Avenue, uh, item number 33, A to C. I have 10 people registered to speak. I have the agent, uh, David Nelligan, are you here, sir?
I am, thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Nelligan, I just wanted to ask, I'm looking through your file, uh, I note that there are, uh, reports from City Planning dated the 30th of June and the 5th of July of 2021. Both of them have no objections to your application. We have a report from Development Engineering dated the 12th of May. They don't, they do not have objections to your application. And there's urban, a comment from Urban Forestry recommending refusing the application because it may require removing one city-owned Redmond Basswood tree. So since we have other speakers, if you could give the committee a, uh, presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal, and you may want to address that issue of the, uh, of the tree. So, uh, if you could, please proceed, sir, and if you could give us your full name and address?
Sure, my name, my name is David Nelligan, I'm a solicitor at Erdnberlis in Toronto, my address is 181 Bay Street.
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, thank you, thank you for your time this afternoon. The proposal before you today is to sever a large lot at Eight Yorkley Avenue into two lots to facilitate the construction of two single-family homes. Uh, we think that this proposal represents very moderate intensification, that's sensible, appropriate, and fits with the prevailing character of the neighborhood. Now, as you may know, um, a similar application was brought before this committee last August and was refused, but what's before you today represents a significant improvement over the previous application. My clients cut the variances requested in half, and has virtually eliminated any variances related to the built form or massing of the proposed houses. There's no variance required for height, for FSI, for coverage, for landscaping, or for setbacks, with the exception of a small portion of the rear deck for one of the properties, which I'll explain shortly. I, I do have a presentation, um, that, that I submitted in advance, and I could ask if that would be turned up, um, while, while I speak. Eight Yorkley is, uh, a sizable corner lot. It has approximately 40 meters of frontage along Fremont Avenue, and approximately 23 meters of frontage along Yorkley Avenue. And the proposal is to sever the lot into two lots, with part one is what's being shown in blue to the north on the screen, and part two in green to the south. Now, these new lots have been referred to as undersized lots, which I think is a bit of an unfair characterization. The reality is that the two new lots are substantially in keeping with the prevailing lot size in the neighborhood. And if I can ask you to turn to the next slide for me. This shows, uh, part one, which actually exceeds the minimum lot area and depth for, for the area. It does require a variance for lot frontage, though, to permit an 18.6-meter frontage, whereas the bylaw requires 21 meters. But that's largely related to how lot frontage is measured according to the bylaw, which is to draw a perpendicular line from lot line to lot line at the required minimum yard setback, which is what's shown in red there. So when you measure according to that way, you, you get 18.6, but, um, when measured along the street, uh, as shown by the yellow line, there's actually 21 meters of property frontage along the street. So while we still do need a variance, um, and, and the frontage is slightly deficient for anybody walking along the street, the property will actually present as a 21-meter wide property. Similarly, if you go to the next, uh, slide, uh, part two is very slightly deficient in front, in lot frontage, as measured according to the bylaw, at 20.3 meters instead of 21 meters, although I'll note that still is in excess of 66 feet. But it does exceed 21 meters of frontage along both the Fremont Avenue and the Yorkley Avenue street lines, and does not at all appear as an undersized lot. There is a variance required for lot area for part two, uh, but not for lot depth, but the resulting lot will only be about 7% smaller than the required lot area, and will be keeping, uh, in keeping with the existing lot sizes. And if you can go to the next slide, I think that's the most important point of this discussion, is that despite the need for some truly minor variances, the resulting lots will be entirely in keeping with the existing physical character of the neighborhood in terms of lot size and dimension. Within a 250-meter radius of the property, there are literally dozens of properties with smaller lot frontages, lot areas, or both. But even within the specific RD zone that imposes these minimum frontages in areas, which is what's shown in blue on this site, there are still a number of properties that are smaller than what is being proposed. What's before you is not a case of dividing a 24-meter lot into two 12-meter lots that are substantially, or half the size, smaller than everything around it. This proposal creates two lots that are substantially the same as its neighbors, and can accommodate two new homes without threatening or destabilizing the existing neighborhood. And I'll note that the official plan notes these neighborhoods are to be stable, not static, and that's precisely what this proposed severance achieves. If you can move on to the next slide for me. I just want to quickly talk about the minor variances that are related to the proposed dwellings, and as mentioned, those relate to the rear deck on the house, on, proposed house on part one. And there are no setback variances related to the building, all of which exceed minimum requirements, but the rear deck, uh, exceeds the 17-meter distance from the main wall and 19-meter distance from the front yard setback, and therefore does require a variance to allow it to, um, be set back a shorter distance from both the south property line and the north property line. But I'd like you just to note that at the north property line, you'll see that the rear deck is angled significantly away from the north property line to reduce any impact, uh, from this rear deck. Um, the rear deck is narrow, and I'll note that the north property line is also the rear lot line of the Absolutely, sir. As you mentioned, planning staff and, and engineering are supportive of this, or have no objections to this proposal. Uh, we are aware and are working with forestry staff on the single tree, but we think this satisfies the requirements of the Planning Act, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Uh, does the committee have any questions to the speaker? Uh, just, uh, Mr. Nelligan, with respect to the tree, does the, does this tree have to be removed?
Uh, it's, it's our position that it does, sir, but we are working with forestry staff to, to work on, um, whether it can be replaced or, or provided as cash and lieu, and, and anything we can do with, uh, forestry to, to accommodate that, or, or to preserve it if possible. Um, that, that's an ongoing discussion that we're having with forestry. We accept the conditions that, that they've imposed, uh, or that they seek to impose, and think that that would satisfy their concerns, uh, and obviously, we don't agree with the, uh, request to, to refuse the application.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Uh, go to the next, uh, I'm sorry, does the committee have any questions to the speaker? Mr. Cumerick?
Just, just one brief one. Um, I noticed a number of letters Just one brief one, I noticed a number of letters of support, but geographically, they seem to be somewhat out of the immediate area. Can you address that?
Certainly, there are some supporters within the vocal, within the area. But as you'll see from the roster of people about to speak to you, this is not something that's very popular with the immediate neighbors. There is a strong opposition to this, as there was with the previous application, and we are aware of that. We have tried to work with the immediate neighbors, but, you know, we obviously are at a disagreement with them, and, you know, we are confident that from a planning perspective, based on the planning merits, this is a sensitive and appropriate addition to the neighborhood, notwithstanding the fact that our neighbors disagree.
Sir, I just wanted to be clear, with respect to the the two buildings you're proposing, Nate, they comply with respect to height, they comply with respect to length, depth, setbacks. It's only those variances that you're requesting that are an issue. Other than that, the buildings would be in compliance with the zoning code, is that correct?
That is correct. The only variances that don't relate to buildings, or to lot size, are the rear deck variances that I've noted. And the location of the driveway for part two, which will be accessed from Fremont Avenue instead of Yorkley, which is a transportation matter that transportation in their report signaled they have no concerns with. Otherwise, for the building, for the buildings, there's no variances required whatsoever.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll go to the next person, registered speaker, I have John Sulek, are you there? Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am here.
Yes, can I get your full name and address, please?
My full name is John Alexander Sulek, and I live at seven four two Scarlet Road.
Okay, sir, if you'd like to give
Thank you very much for your time. Yes, I object to this proposal, which is remarkably similar to last year's proposal that was refused. My main concern is that there's going to be a lot of increased rainwater runoff from two larger homes, which would impact
Before you keep going about stormwater runoff and drainage, you need to know that the committee does not deal with that issue. If you've looked through
Okay.
material on file, you'll see that there's comments in the Development Engineering Report that says, and I emphasize this to future speakers on this application, because we don't want to go over it again. In conjunction with the building permit application, to ensure that the development of the subject land does not create a drainage problem to this or a budding lands, the applicant must submit a lot grading plan to the Buildings Division in accordance with the Building Division's policy on building and drainage for infill housing. So, sir, don't waste your time talking about drainage, focus on the planning issues.
Okay, then on page seven of the ECS report from the city, it states that the Toronto Water Engineering and Construction oppose reverse slope driveways. It's one of their advisory conditions. Both of the plans for these homes have driveways that slope downhill from Fremont. So I'm wondering how that squares with all the city's concerns over flooding?
Sir, with, as I indicated before, they're not reverse slope driveways, so certainly under the zoning code. So, that's the issue of drainage is dealt with at the building permit stage, they have to make sure that their drainage is dealt with, that it funnels onto the street, and it doesn't funnel onto neighboring properties.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm concerned, because during this whole process, I have never had any communication from the developers, and as someone who lives at the bottom of the hill, I'm a little concerned.
Okay, that's fine, sir, but in terms of, that's not relevant to our discussion here at the committee.
Okay, well, then my only other concern is that there's a preservation bylaw in this neighborhood that is supposed to preclude anyone from splitting the lots to that size. Now, this was brought up at the last Committee of Adjustment hearing, and I thought that that bylaw is still standing. I know our city councillor has gone to bat for that bylaw, so I don't really understand if that bylaw exists and is still on the books. Why did these people get to sever the lot when no one else in the neighborhood has been allowed to do that?
Okay, thank you, sir. Do you have any further comments?
No, my biggest comment is that during this whole process, there's been very little communication from the developer. They got refused unanimously last year, they appealed to T-Lab. The neighbors spent all the time and money to mount an opposition. The developer pulled out of his appeal after the submission date for all his documents. So he basically got to see all our research for free. Then he abandoned his appeal, and now he's back again. And that's, that pretty much says all I have to say about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Being none, we'll go to the next speaker on the list, I have Maria Tohachi. Are you there, madam?
Yes, I am.
Can I get your full name and address, please?
My name is Maria Tohachi, and I'm at fifty-four Fremont Avenue. I'm right across from the from eight Yorkley, I'm a direct neighbor.
Okay, thank you, madam, please give us your thoughts.
Yes, I would also like to emphasize that even though the developer just mentioned that he worked with the neighbors to resolve our concern, I've never, I had zero communication from the developer on the previous committee hearing or this committee hearing. I have not been contacted once to address any of my concerns. I submitted the, with my application, my major concern about all the big mature trees that facing my property. You've mentioned that the forestry has concerns and suggested the denial of the application. For me, you know, I bought this property six years ago. I love the neighborhood, it's full of mature trees, it's the character of the neighborhood. I knew about the bylaw protecting these lots from severance, and for me, this was a big thing. I invested a lot to upgrade my property, to enjoy my property, and given the application, I see that with the cutting of those trees, we're losing a lot of wildlife that's currently is living on the trees. And I'm also going to have to be looking at two garages instead of the properties that, the property that I'm looking right now. My main concern is the splitting of the lots. I think the developer could have could have built a single dwelling, and nobody would have been objecting to that. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we have, next speaker is Rita Molinari, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, madam, can I get your full name and address, please?
Okay. Yes, hi there. Okay, my name is Rita Molinari, and I represent my mother, Bruna Cralia, who is ninety-four years old, and is living at twenty-two Yorkley Avenue, and has been there since nineteen sixty-seven, which makes it fifty-four years. And so I object to these applications, as I did last year for the similar applications by the same builder developer that were then refused by this committee. My family knows the history of the Yorkley Avenue area well. For over half a century, neighbors, long time and newcomers alike, cared about their properties, maintained their homes, landscaped their lots, and nurtured their trees and greenery. By the early nineteen seventies, the neighborhood had become truly exceptional. The planning director at the time described, and I quote, "Large homes on well-developed lots distinguish the area from other urban areas," end quote. This led to the enactment of Preservation Bylaw thirty-one forty-eight, establishing regulations on minimum lot frontage, area, and depth. The intent was to preserve the large lots, ensure no severing of lots to undersized ones, and to maintain the exceptional character of the area. And these regulations were incorporated into City of Toronto Zoning Bylaw five six nine dash two zero one three. All past applications for severance to undersized lots have been refused, either by the Committee of Adjustment or on appeal, mostly based on Bylaw thirty-one forty-eight, including one recent refusal in twenty seventeen at eighty-two Roxaleen, located just outside of the area. As a result, the area has thrived. In her fifty-four years at the same house, my mother can attest that the area remains stable while continuing to renew itself. New families moved in, and new houses went up in the place of old ones. It is not static, as mentioned by David Nelligan. The neighborhood has become more diverse over the years. All these homeowners to date continue to update, maintain, and landscape their homes and lots in this consistent manner for over fifty years. Following the Committee of Adjustment's refusal last year in August of the previous applications, our city councillor, Andy Tobico-York, Community Council passed a resolution seeking to protect jurisdictions such as ours, where large or wide, quote, estate lots prevail, from speculative developers who seek to sever them and attack the neighborhood's character. We are currently working with our councillor to uphold this mandate. The severance of eight Yorkley Avenue into two smaller lots should not be allowed when the lots do not conform to Bylaw thirty-one forty-eight, which was not at all mentioned by the owner, developer, lawyer, representing him. The applications you have before you are in serious contravention of it. I would like the committee to note that eight Yorkley is situated on quite a steep corner hill, sloping sharply from Fremont south and east down to Yorkley. Even on a steep downhill sideways slope, it appears that the proposed elevations of two new structures would still be the highest elevations on Fremont. This is an egregious neighborhood design deviation. In closing, I cannot emphasize, overemphasize, to the Committee of Adjustment, that as a neighborhood homeowner for over fifty-four years, I have taken the spirit and intent of Bylaw thirty-one forty-eight very seriously, and wish to see a single dwelling on the undivided lot. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Being none, we'll go to the next person on the list, I have Sabine Smith, are you there, madam?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, it's Sabina Smith, four Yorkley Avenue.
Thank you. Please give us your thoughts on this application.
Well, thank you very much for your time. Four Yorkley Avenue is my childhood home. I don't want to get into emotional things, but I was born there, and I have moved back there now that my parents have passed away, so it's very close to my heart. I want to mention also that a few neighbors did try to talk to the developer, but he was not interested in entertaining us further, so just want to put that on the record. We were talking about flooding, which I will not mention, but I wanted to just say that because the both driveways are going to be on Fremont, and they must slope towards the street, then obviously, the grading of of the lot has to be changed, to create a positive grade. The proposed ground floor level of both proposed homes are going to be about seventy centimeters over the garage floors. So the two homes are going to have to be built with a ground floor on a level even higher than Fremont, which is about two meters over the ground floor level of the current house that is going to be demolished. So that means I'm going to be looking at like a casaloma next door to me, which is not going to be a positive casaloma. It's going to be a huge house that's going to invade on my privacy, my backyard, my sunlight. And I feel that it's without care, it is not within the character and scope of the other homes in the area. Also, great importance to note is that both applicable bylaws, so Bylaw five six nine dash twenty thirteen and the Preservative Bylaw three one four eight, call for minimum lot footage, frontage, sorry, area and depth. The proposed configuration of the severed lots violates all three, and is out of the established character of the existing neighborhood. Furthermore, the narrow lot configuration and resulting building envelopes necessitate variances to more important zoning regulations like side yard setback. So it's one point two meters to two meters proposed versus seven point five required minimum. So this is a big variance, it's not a small one. The variances on frontages and areas speak for themselves. Regarding depths, the minimum depth of new lots must be no less than the average of depths of immediately neighboring lots. But the severed lots are both about half the depth of my lot, which is a huge difference. In addition to this, whichever two sides of eight Yorkley, whichever side of the lot you want to choose to take the average of, and whichever way you measure, east, west, north, or south, at least one of the sublots comes up short. The size of these homes will be much larger than any of the homes in the surrounding area. They will be towering over my property and dwarf my home. I sent in a schematic number one, which can show that. The top of our property, I'll see, I'll wait till you get it up there. Did you find that schematic?
Just one moment.
Thank you so much. Yeah, that's it right there. So if you look to the far right, that little red house, that is, that is, the top of the property is the tiny structure, that's my property on the right-hand side. So the proposed homes and the new lot sizes are going to be way out of scale. We're no longer going to have estate lots in the area, which is why we all have bought into that area, have all stayed in that area, and will all like to keep it like that. And not to mention the trees, it's not just one tree, but anyway. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Okay, we'll go to the next speaker on the list, I have Anthony Vlasopoulos, are you there, sir?
Yes, Anthony Vlasopoulos, seventeen Mount Button Road.
Yes, sir, can I, can you give us your full name and address, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you give us your full name and address, please?
Anthony Vlasopoulos, seventeen Mount Button.
Okay, thank you, sir, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application. And, sir, if I emphasize, please, don't repeat
Can you hear me? Anthony Vlasopoulos, seventeen Mount Button Road.
Sir, you have to, do you have a number of audio devices turned on, because we're getting reverberation
The Yorkley area has a unique character due to large lots, tall trees, and landscaped gardens.
Okay, sir, please proceed.
You cannot hear me?
Sir, yeah, we can hear you, sir, but you have, you have, just speak through your telephone, we're getting reverberation on our end. You're reverberating, you're picking up the meeting, so just speak through your telephone, turn everything else off.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Are you there, sir? Mr. Vlasopoulos, are you there?
I have everything off.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
I have everything off. Yes, I'm here, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, sir, we can hear you, please proceed.
Okay, the Yorkley area has Can you hear me now?
Sir, we can hear you, can you please proceed?
The Yorkley area has a unique character due to large lots, tall trees, and large gardens. Yes, it has been preserved for forty-seven years, assisted by Law three one four eight establishing minimum lot dimensions. The half dozen smaller lots in the protected area were grandfathered at that time. According to the zoning notices, eight Yorkley is quote, zoned R two and is subject to Bylaw three one four eight. There were five past applications to sever lots to undersized ones, they all failed. As a result, our neighborhood has remained stable. As a result, our neighborhood has remained stable and vibrant with new houses built all the time of existing lots. I have a picture of aerial views from the city website for years from seventy-three to today. Can you please display my first slide, Mr. Presenter? Excellent. This is the map of Preservative Bylaw. If we go down, can we go down? Can we continue down that slide? Well, if we continue down, you are going to see aerial pictures from, yeah, for this, this one nineteen ninety-two, and two more before and after, and you will see that the neighborhood has remained stable, yet we've had larger buildings built. Applications to sever lots to undersized ones have become tedious. So after last year's application for Eight Yorkley was refused, Etobicoke York Community Council adopted a motion to seek ways to protect unique neighborhoods such as ours with clusters of large wide lots. The motion mentions our neighborhood by name. I have another picture that shows the motion. We can put it on the screen, please. I have another picture, another file, another file that puts the motion on the table. Okay, great, this is, no, no, I had, well, anyway, trust me, there is a motion that was approved, and it mentions our neighborhood by name, by the name of Humber Heights. The applicant claims that our area has a mix of lot sizes, large and small. No, no, well, cast a wide enough net, and you will catch some small lots. But the limits of our neighborhood are well-defined by its street scale. That's why the community council mentioned our neighborhood by name. I am also concerned that the North House Part One is too close to the fence, about two meters versus seven point five minimum. It will kill half a dozen trees that grew on both sides of the fence, over taken. Also, this is a steep lot, Eight Yorkley, and the present house is nicely built halfway up. But the garages of the new house, of the proposed houses, will be built on the highest point on Fremont, and as a result, those new houses are going to tower over the neighborhoods, left, right, down, uphill, and deep and up here. Regarding consent, when the applicant appealed to deal up last year, our planner wrote an opinion that both proposed builds do not represent good planning. They do not satisfy the subdivision criteria of the Planning Act. They do not conform to the relevant policies of the official plan within the neighborhood's designation, and they cannot be implemented without certain zoning amendments.
Sir, can you summarize?
Now, speaking for my wife and I, also.
Sir, can you summarize?
Thank you. I'm done. I recommend to listen again.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? We'll go to the next speaker on the list. I have Joe Kennedy. Are you there?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy, we can hear you.
Yes, I'm here.
Can we get your full name and address?
Okay, so I had, yes, my name is Joseph Kennedy. I live at Seven Yorkley Avenue.
Okay, thank you, sir. If you'd just like to give us your thoughts on this application, but please try not to repeat material we've already heard.
Okay, so the, I put in some presentation material, which I'd like just to put up, and I'll move through it rather efficiently. No, that's the, it was a colored PDF, that's my written submission. There's also a separate PDF that is for presentation purposes. That's it. You just went by it. You just went by it. That's it there. Nope. That's it right there. No.
Did you submit the letter, the materials prior to the deadline or after the deadline?
Oh, yeah, no, it's on the, it's actually on the website. I pulled it up myself here, so I got it from your website. So there's, I.
Just give me one moment.
I mean, can you, yeah.
Hi, Joseph.
Yes.
Do you know when you submitted it, just because it might be in one package or another, depending on when you submitted it?
Yeah, it's on the second, when I look at the website, it's on the second of the three applications, and it's about, how many megabytes is it? It's seventeen point eight-five megabytes.
Okay.
Is the file size.
Mr. Barcellet, would you like us to hold this down for a couple of minutes and then come back to, so we can find it? Well, we'll, I can hold this down for a couple of minutes. We'll adjourn for a couple of, will that give you some time to find it, Ms. Sortos?
Yes, that's fine, or we can move on to the next speaker and come back to Mr. Kennedy, whatever you prefer.
Mr. Kennedy, I'm sorry, we'll just put you on hold till we can find your material, and we'll come back to you. Go to the next person on the list, Camila Glouny, I hope I pronounced that correctly, G-L-I-W-N-Y.
Yes, that's correct.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, madam, it's very hard to hear you. We can hardly hear you. Are you there?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Very, very faintly, madam.
Okay, is it anywhere there?
That's better, that's better.
Okay.
So if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this applica, we need your full name and address first.
Absolutely. It's Camila Glivney, seven four four Scarlet Road.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the time and for listening to our calls. It may seem repetitive what we say, but this is actually how we feel, how our community feels about the potential impact of the proposed changes. We had to actually limit the number of the speakers because otherwise nobody would be able to get home by nine, night to day. We have to strongly object the proposed plan to subdivide the property at number Eight Yorkley Avenue. We've already got identical meeting last year, it was actually on July fourteen, so it's one year missing a day, and we are just surprised that this matter is reaching the Committee of Adjustment again, because we cannot see any substantial changes to the application. And actually, before we move to the planning issue, we should concentrate on the purpose and suitability of the lot severance. There is no other reason, there is no advantage to the community for the lot severance, other than the, sorry, financial gain for the current owners. And we are deeply surprised and shocked that the planning department can consider proposed changes as being advantageous to the community. And we have already established, like many speakers before, talked about the Bylaw that was established in nineteen seventy-four, which was forty-seven years ago. And we are just trying very hard to make people to respect and obey it. This Bylaw was created just to preserve and protect the mature community from land overdevelopment. Many of us, the property owners in this area, could split their respective lots for substantial financial profit. However, that's not the way we prefer to live. We just want to demonstrate the care for the community. We hope for greener city, for safer neighborhoods. We would like to abide the law. We would like to stop uncontrolled densification of our and other areas in the cities. And this was behind the, it was the reason behind created Bylaw three-one-four-eight. We have to, we have to consider that the times are changing, and right now, we are working, and we might be required to work from homes more often than before. This is really how we should perceive our future. Our city should be greener, should be happier. And getting back to this particular issue, the community should be not encumbered with two non-compliant structures, resourcefully squished into two undersized lots. They are resulting in restricting the privacy of the neighbors. They are increasing the noise level and the traffic in the area. They are substantially reducing the green space and impacting the existing tree inventory. The water runoff problem, we've already discussed, but this is the area that's sloping toward the Humber River, and we have to keep it in consideration. Also, we are thinking about, because there is a senior's home in the neighborhood, it's a residence with two hundred thirty pensioners, and it's within two hundred fifty meters from the proposed development.
Madam, can you summarize, please?
Yes, to summarize, we are strongly feeling about the community, and we feel there is no, absolutely no advantage to the community that would come with the lot severance. So please consider our standing, and please vote against lot severance. Thanks so much.
Thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, let's go back to Ms. Zortos. Did we find Mr. Kennedy's email?
Yes, I have it. I'll share it now.
Put Mr. Kennedy back on the mic. Mr. Kennedy, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
We found your material, so if you'd like to start your presentation again.
Okay. Okay, so my name is Joe Kennedy. I live at Seven Yorkley. I'm across the Yorkley from the appellant. I've lived there for fifty-five years, and I'm a professional engineer. So the neighborhood presented by the appellant in his presentation is actually incorrect and quite misleading. Our Yorkley area neighborhood is clearly defined by a Preservative Bylaw thirty-one forty-eight, and if you just scroll down the page, you will see and highlight it that this Bylaw is in effect, and as said by city planning in their report and by the Engineering Construction Services report. Our neighborhood is clearly defined, the yellow area, so if we just go down the next page. Can we move down to the? Okay, you're in the, okay, sorry, forget, you're, just go up again, you're not, this is my, this is my application, my letter, it's not the slide, so we'll have to find the slides in here, which will be a little inefficient and take up more time. So you have to go upwards a bit. Okay, okay, so let's just deal with stuff as you can find, and go back down to the picture. So this isn't the order I wanted to do it, but here's a picture of the site. You'll notice at the back, by the swimming pool, there's a dead tree. Every other tree on that lot that you see is going to be gone. It's a clear-cut application. They're going to clear-cut the property. So go down to the drawing, just at the next one below. Okay, the dead tree is in gray. The three red trees will be clear-cut, and the green trees along the property line will be killed because when they dig the foundation, they're going to cut into their tree line, they'll be about a meter away at most, which means there's no chance that those trees are going to survive. Okay, so we're talking clear-cut, and this is one of the reasons that forestry isn't too impressed with the application. They're going to cut down every single tree, and we're going to be left looking at a couple of houses and a bush. Okay, now, there should be another table in here, you'll have to scroll to find it, it's an Excel table with a couple of colored highlights. It should be up near the front.
One moment, Mr. Kennedy, we were able to find your slide presentation.
Oh, my other one's perfect, okay. Okay, so just while we're waiting here, it should be noted that both Bylaw five-sixty-nine and the Preservative Bylaw thirty-one forty-eight are declared by the city, both being enforced right now. And Bylaw thirty-one forty-eight was enacted by council, and it was ratified by the O M P, which makes them the experts in what is our neighborhood. So the yellow area you're looking at is our neighborhood. What the appellant presented is not our neighborhood, it's just what's around the outsides, which do not count. Okay? If we go down to the table. I was living at Seven Yorkley when the Bylaw was put in place, and it was designed specifically to preserve the unique character of our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is, by the yellow area, is sixty-seven houses. Eleven of those houses are undersized, and those are highlighted in green. Okay? The red area houses, there are six of those, those were lot-split, and those are the reason Bylaw thirty-one forty-eight was created. Okay? All the other houses are conformed to a seventy-foot frontage. If you allow a sixty-foot frontage, which is what the appellant is asking, there is another eight lots in our neighborhood that are going to get split, because if you let one in, you got to let them all in. This will change our neighborhood completely. Essentially, you're deciding whether you're going to destroy our neighborhood, or you're going to let us continue to be a preserved, beautiful place to live. But make no mistake about it, if you let this lot split, our neighborhood is done. He's got this really huge lot, which happens to be the smallest lot on my part of the neighbor. I'm bigger than him, my neighbor's bigger than him, and Sabina's bigger than him. So this huge lot he's talking about isn't really that big. It's big if you live elsewhere, but it's not big if you live on Yorkley Avenue. And by the way, once you'd say sixty's okay, then it's only a couple of paces away from fifty, and then at this point, our neighborhood no longer exists. That pretty much covers it. There's also, if you go down a bit, I just want to show you a nice little drawing I did, so a little further. Yeah, you keep going there, past that. And that just shows you all the trees that aren't going to be there anymore, so just anything green in that picture doesn't exist anymore. No, it's to go up a bit, there's, okay, so the blue drawing, I don't know if you can make that bigger. No, go up, up, stop. So that blue drawing is a scale drawing of those two proposed houses. Nope. That's the side view, so I want the blue drawing, which is the top view. That's the side view, so I want the blue drawing, which is the top view. Yep. Okay, the cottage to the right is my humble little abode, which is almost going to be, my peak of my roof will almost be equal to their first floor. Right? These houses are going to be huge in height because they're going to have to raise the ground two meters. All right? So although they don't, they are okay for square foot coverage, and they are okay for their height, but when you put them on the street, on a hill, and you bring the hill up a couple of meters, you end up with something that's completely out of scale.
Sir, can you summarize?
And Sabina, yep. I'll summarize by saying, please preserve our neighborhood. Do not allow this lot and this person to destroy a bylaw that has worked for us for 47 years. Please don't destroy our neighborhood. We beg you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, I have, with any questions to the speaker? Next speaker is Anthony Ruggiero. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I'm here.
And Mr. Ruggiero, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application, please, sir, don't repeat material we've already heard.
No problem. Paul at the COA there said that my presentation portion, because I did submit an objection and presentation, he said that it would be in the additional materials package, so I can start talking while they pull that up. It's got just pictures, no written text, just pictures and maps, if they can just pull that up for me. I just wanted to start off by making the point that the committee has already denied consent to sever this lot in its present form in 2020. So regardless of the changes to the home size, height, deck, or number of variances, the consent to sever this lot in this configuration was already denied. I'm pretty sure this isn't the appeal board, so I just wanted to make that clear right off the get-go. The agent makes a great presentation on how if you measured the lot in a different way, it would meet the 21-meter frontage, but unfortunately, we have to go by the procedures and the guidelines the City of Toronto lays out with regards to measuring the lot frontages on this property. So I just had that little bit to say there. This is not part of my package, unfortunately. It starts off with a map similar, it's a black and white map that it starts off with. And there's 29 slides in it. I did title it Anthony Ruggiero Presentation. This definitely isn't it. I'm looking at the first page of my presentation now, on my own screen. So the point of my presentation is to show the committee members a little bit more about the area. I know you've heard a lot about the area, but we've still yet to see anything about the area. So I just have various pictures and slides that speak to the trees that we are all concerned about, and just to show you the trees found on the other area, on the rest of the street, as well as the generous setbacks in lot sizes that are found throughout Yorkley. And I just want to make it clear that I'm number 11, so I'm directly across from the applicant's property, and we do have the biggest property on the street with 190 feet of frontage and over 200 feet of depth. We've lived here for over 30 years and have obviously no intention of lot splitting and building multiple homes on our property, which we could so obviously do if we really wanted to. So we're here to preserve the neighborhood. I just wanted to see if they had any luck in finding my presentation.
Just give us one moment. Sorry.
Okay. Do we have it, Ms. Zartos?
Oh, there we go. Excellent. So the star represents the applicant's property. We have Yorkley. You can see mine kitty-corner to the applicant in that large square on the opposite corner. You can go right on to the next slide. You can actually, you can slowly click through these every 10 seconds or so. It's no problem. You can slowly go through them. This is the applicant's property, Eight Yorkley. If you can go to the next slide. As you can see here, the left side is Fremont, where the driveways would be. So as you can see, it is rather high, the road. You can kind of see it right on the left corner of that picture. Just wanted to get that visual out there to give you guys a good visual on the actual layout and grading of the property itself. You can keep on going. Some of the trees, these are looking from the applicant's property, both east and west. As you can see, the trees on the neighborhood are very mature. It is a neighborhood almost 200 years old. My home was built in 1840. We can keep going. This is further up Yorkley. So these next two pictures, the one we just passed and this one, these are further up Yorkley, just to give you guys a look at the setbacks of the homes, to give you guys a real clear picture that we're not just a bunch of complaining neighbors. We are trying to preserve something that is rarely found, not only in Etobicoke, but in many parts of Toronto and the greater GTA. You can keep on scrolling. This is Sabina's house. This is Joe Kennedy's house. As you can see, the size of the lots, the setbacks, well situated on both their properties. Joseph has a rather large property here, modest home, but still a large property with many mature trees on it. We can keep going. This is my home with the frontage and property size I spoke of, as well as the mature trees that I'm working hard and paying to preserve.
Sir, can you summarize, please?
Yep. If the clicker, just keep on clicking right through, just to give them a quick look. These three properties here that they're just clicking through, you can keep going, are all the consent-to-sever denials that have happened in the last 15 years on Yorkley and Roxlin, which is joined on Yorkley. It's right at the top. But those have all been denied. In the past, this property has been denied in 2020, and since there have been no changes to the property size that they're looking to sever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? There being none, we'll move to our next speaker. I have Louise Santos.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hi, good afternoon.
Yes.
I'll be quick.
Yes, madam. We've heard a lot of material here today, so you don't need to repeat material we've already heard. We've heard it loud and clear, so tell us something new.
Well, I'm the last speaker, I'm assuming, so they've covered a lot of ground here. So I am possibly going to be repetitive, but I will be very quick, just to show you that there is passion in this neighborhood to preserve it. So I live at 35 Yorkley, and obviously, we object to the severing in the variances that have been proposed. We purchased our home in 2011 in the middle of the Yorkley area with its large lots, well-maintained gardens and tall trees because it supports our needs and lifestyle. We did so for the long term, especially since site-specific bylaw, again, 3148, gave us comfort that our choice and investment would be protected, which is not being, which it doesn't appear to be at the moment. The applicant's proposal neither respects nor reinforces the character of the surrounding neighborhood, which you've heard from many of us, which has a well-established lotting pattern consisting of large residential lots. It would be very disappointing if anything happens now that alters the look and feel of our street, as the application in front of you will surely do. Our enjoyment of our property, excuse me, would be totally lost. Severing lots to undersized ones is out of the scale to our neighborhood and doesn't fit. You've heard it before. I'm going to say it again. The limits of our neighborhood are clear and much narrower than argued by the applicant. In 2017, these narrow limits were argued successfully by the Yorkley residents at an Ontario Municipal Board hearing for the corner lot at Yorkley and 82 Roxline Street. In that case, the developer claimed that the neighborhood was larger than the immediate vicinity, therefore, it included smaller lots. But the OMB did not accept and refuse the lot severing. This case is much more severe. Our Yorkley neighborhood is subject to site-specific bylaw 3148. The zoning notices acknowledge it, that the bylaw was enacted in 1974 to prevent lot severing, to lots below specified minimum dimensions for frontage, area, and depth, and to preserve the Yorkley character. These minimums are carried in bylaw 569-213, but that bylaw is silent on the intent to preserve. In any case, all our large lots have been preserved for decades, and that is what makes our neighborhood distinct from others and special. Municipalities recognize the value of their, quote, "estate lot neighborhoods," and implement tools to preserve them. Bylaw 3148 has done it for us since 1974. Now, York Community Council passed a motion last year to reinforce such protection for our neighborhood by name and seven more by name. Another weakness of the applications is that the north side yard setback is about two meters, when the allowed minimum is 7.5 meters. Again, there are several tall trees by the fence, which Joe spoke to, that will all be killed to accommodate the new house. It will further destroy the look and feel of the area, which tall trees help define. There is demand for urban living in large homes on large lots, but Toronto does not have too many residential areas like ours to fill that need. Areas like ours, however, few contribute enormously to diversity of our city, adding to its vibrancy and livability. This application must again, again, be denied. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? Okay, thank you. We'll go back to Mr. Nelligan. Are you there?
I'm still here. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Nelligan, I just wanted to ask, I note that there was a lot of discussion about this previous, the old Etobicoke bylaw number 3148, and I'm making reference to, and whether you agree with this or not, there was a report from City Planning Day to June 30th, 2021, and they indicated in that bylaw that, in their report, that the site is also subject to the former City of Etobicoke Code, more specifically, site-specific zoning bylaw number 3148. Planning staff note, there are no variances being requested under the former City of Etobicoke zoning code or site-specific bylaw number 3148. In addition, the provisions of the site-specific zoning bylaw number 3148 have been superseded by Citywide Zoning Bylaw 569-2013, particularly as they relate to lot frontage and lot area, and are no longer applicable. So is that your reading of it, too?
That's correct, sir. Our reading of it is that it is superseded by bylaw 569. And really, what bylaw 3148 does is it doesn't establish a prohibition against severances. It sets out performance standards for lot sizes with specific respect to lot frontage, lot depth, and lot area, and those were carried forward in the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw 569-2013. And like any bylaw, sir, the Ontario Legislature has seen fit to establish a process to seek minor variances from those bylaws where this committee or where the Ontario Land Tribunal sees fit based on planning merits and based on the tests under the Planning Act. So these bylaws, while there's a need to adhere to these bylaws, there is a process established by the legislature to seek minor variances where appropriate, and our position is that it's appropriate in this case. What I've heard from the community is concerns about losing large lots. But what this proposal does is it actually still creates and preserves large lots. Lot one, or part one on the R Plan, is still in excess of the minimum lot area in the neighborhood, and lot two is only 7% smaller than the minimum lot area and is still bigger than at least a half dozen lots in the area. This is, there was, a couple of speakers raised the case of 82 Roxlin, which was actually approved unanimously by this committee, but overturned on appeal. And in that case, quite unlike this case, it was a 24-meter lot that was being divided into two 12-meter lots, which were clearly undersized for the preservative bylaw area. We are incredibly close to the minimum standards, and the impact and the desirability and the adherence to the general intent and purpose of the official plan and the zoning bylaw is maintained and should go forward. I do want to make a couple of corrections from a couple of the things that some of the speakers said. I heard that the proposal violates all three of the performance standards of the preservative bylaw, being area, depth, and frontage. That is not true. We're simply seeking variances for frontage for both properties and lot area. For the other, there are no depth variances. Similarly, there's no clear-cutting going on on the site. There will be the removal of trees to accommodate this, but that's subject to forestry's conditions, and there will be no removal of trees on adjacent properties without the consent of those property owners, consistent with the Forestry Act and private property concerns. So there's no risk of losing trees. There's no risk of creating small lots. This is based on the planning merits and not based on the hyperbole from the neighbors. This is a very approvable application, and we hope you see fit to agree.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, just, I was on the panel that considered this application previously. Just wondering what the substantive changes are in relation to the application that was previously considered in this application, other than the variances. Is there a grade difference or something like that, maybe?
Thanks for that question. The lot dimensions are substantially the same as what was presented previously, but the variances associated with them with respect to the proposed dwellings are substantially different. The previous application sought variances for density and FSI and for soffit height and for other built form areas. What's being proposed to you today is lot dimensions that can accommodate 3300 square feet homes without the need for any variances with respect to lot coverage or density or height or anything else. We're presenting you with large lots that are substantially consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and that can accommodate the proposed development that my client is seeking approvals for.
Any further questions? Could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Palmer?
I'm, yeah, I'm prepared to move for approval. As I said, I was on a previous application, and I think I took issue, I believe it was with the severance, and I clearly remembering, thinking that it was premature because of engineering-related issues. It looks like, and specifically the reverse slope driveways, I believe, it looks like that's been corrected. These are different applications. Obviously, the variances are not substantive. So I believe that the severances meet the requirements in the Planning Act, and the variances requested are minor in nature and meet the four tests in the Planning Act. So I'm prepared to move for approval. Subject to the...
Mr. Palmer, just a second. We've lost the video feed here. There was a power surge. Hang on just a moment. I just have to reorient the, just can we take a couple of minute break here and try and get this sorted out? My apologies. I don't know. Okay, I got you. Sorry, Mr. Palmer, just had to make some, uh, adjustments here. Can you, uh, can you continue where we left off?
Okay, so I'm prepared to move for approval, subject to the forestry conditions, one and two, subject to the standard, uh, engineering, uh, uh, conditions. I don't believe planning had any conditions, so, uh, that's my recommendation and, uh, motion put forward.
Okay, and we have a, a motion for Mr. Palmer to approve the application. Have someone to second that motion? Uh, Mr. Kumerick seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to development engineering. Pardon me, development engineering and urban forestry conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Item number thirty-four, four, five, four, Valeramo Drive. I have only one person registered to speak. That is, uh, Sean McGaffey. Are you there, sir?
I am, sir. Good afternoon.
Yes, can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Sean McGaffey, and my address is ninety Eglington Avenue East, Suite nine, seven, zero.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, we have, um, look, a number of reports on file. We have a report from City Planning dated the fifth of July, twenty-twenty-one. It recommends your application be refused. There's a recommendation from Urban Forestry to refuse the application. There's a report from Development Engineering dated the sixth of April, twenty-twenty-one. They were recommending deferring the application because Transportation Services wants access to Part One, taken from Hallmark Avenue, uh, if it, um... So, they had indicated they had some site, the issues with, uh, potential sightline obstructions. In view of those reports, sir, would you like to defer your application or would you like it heard today?
Uh, no, sir. I'd like to proceed with the application today, and, uh, I, I hope you could indulge me with a short presentation.
Okay, if you could get, you'll have to give us a presentation then and then focus on the comments from, uh, both. Actually, you've got planning, forestry, and development engineering.
Yeah, yes, yes, sir. If I, if I could please ask that my, uh, presentation materials just be put on the screen, uh, specifically page two, if I can. Thank you. So, I would like to start by asking, or by asking that should the committee decide to approve this application, I am requesting that it be tied to the plans before you today, that standard urban forestry conditions two and three be applied, that the ECS conditions of their memorandum be applied. And this is an important consideration that I'll get to momentarily. I have had a chance to review the various materials submitted on this file, including the letters of support and materials from city planning staff. Having worked back and forth with planning staff for the past year or so, I disagree with their findings and their reports submitted on this matter. The site is zoned RMU three, exception eighteen, and by law five, six, nine, twenty thirteen. And the exception isn't as particularly important consideration in the context of the regulations applicable to the site. FSI is limited only by the application of former bylaws from nineteen seventy-nine and nineteen eighty-one that arbitrarily limit the density to point four FSI, including the area of the basement if finished. It is not limited, or so I should say, FSI is not limited by the parent provisions of bylaw five, six, nine, outside of a detached house within this neighborhood. Things have changed since the nineteen seventy-nine adoption of area-specific bylaws, and I trust the surrounding development approvals and gradual change within the neighborhood will demonstrate this. The area shown in my research, uh, provides for a variety of building typologies, including those that have been developed incrementally over time, and it's no different than many other areas of the city in that regard. In response to some of the comments raised by the staff report, I'll focus on three issues, being lot pattern, FSI, coverage, or precedent. That's four, sorry. So, lot pattern, uh, I note that in the staff comments, there's no issues being identified here with the lot frontages or the lot area of Part One. So, the proposed Part Two lot area is identified in particular by, as, by staff as being an issue, although it's only seven point three percent less than other similar semi-detached lots along Valeramo. Staff raise no issue with Part One or the proposed lot frontages. It is important to note that respect and reinforce in a neighborhood's context does not mean the same. Uh, the plan expects the change may be contentious at times and provides guidance that, uh, development that is, whose physical characteristics are not the most frequently occurring, but do exist in substantial numbers within the geographic neighborhood, provided that the physical characteristics of the proposed development is materially consistent with the physical character of the neighborhood, and already have a significant presence on properties located within the immediate context or budding street, uh, are not precluded by this respect and reinforce in prevailing character policy language. My research demonstrates that similar forms and densities exist within the neighborhood, particularly those along Valeramo, and this is shown in my cover letter submissions and on page one of my presentation materials. With respect to the proposed FSI and coverage, similar to the lot pattern, my research demonstrates again that a variety of densities and coverages, all within the range of that being sought today, including on corner lots with semi-detached dwellings along Valeramo. The coverage itself is a result of the deployment of an appropriate build form, including front, side, and rear yard setbacks, and with a length that's consistent with adjacent residential properties. With respect to the precedent and future instability of the neighborhood, planning staff have identified concerns that if approved, would create increased pressures for future severances on these lots with similar characteristics, which could potentially alter the prevailing character of the neighborhood. They make specific reference in their materials to lots on, to the development potential of corner lots along Valeramo. I note that of every property on a corner that has been severed along Valeramo, it is for a semi-detached house. Those are shown in red on my map there. Severances for detached houses are shown in pink. And triplexes, which are also permitted in this zone, are shown in yellow. I do not feel that approval of this application will bring rise to any neighborhood instability, including with particular weight assigned to corner lot typologies. With respect to access and driveways, I reviewed the ECS comments when they came in, uh, and find that similar again, every semi-detached property along Valeramo on a corner lot provides both access driveways to Valeramo, not to a flanking street. This is a common condition with particular relevance to a semi-detached lot on a corner along Valeramo. Hallmark Avenue access was investigated through the process, and as discussed with planning staff, our preference, or, and the, the preference was to take it off Valeramo. Uh, with respect to urban forestry, my client retained an arborist to inform the development of the proposal, and there's several...
Can you summarize, please?
Yeah, so I'll just say with respect to urban forestry, the two trees along Valeramo are being preserved, and one tree along Hallmark Avenue will be removed, but it's within the as-of-right zoning envelope on the property.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, does the, uh, I wanted to ask with respect to, how does the height of this proposed building relate to the four flat-roofed buildings, flat-roofed, single-family homes that are immediately to the east of this site? Are they taller?
Through you, Mr. Chair, they will be taller, and that's a product of the, uh, bylaw five, six, nine, twenty thirteen, providing for a lower height for flat-roofed dwellings than it does for a peak-roof, uh, dwelling.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker?
I have just a question, perhaps a comment. There's ten letters that have been submitted that I would refer to as non-laters, uh, because it's not stating whether these people are in support or opposition.
Uh, yeah, sorry, I, I, uh, when I review the...
Those are letters that you were trying to submit as, uh, in support.
Uh, well, they, they're marked as support letters, but it was, uh, to demonstrate that, you know, people within the neighborhood, including those within proximity to the site, have reviewed the plans. And, uh, they're not, and no one is here today to make objections to this proposal.
Correct, but I just want to point out to, to my fellow members that none of those letters state that the signatories are in support of the proposal.
And are there any further questions to the speaker? Ms. Ortiz, can we get the full screen up back, back up of the committee members? Thank you. Uh, can I, can we get a motion on this application, please?
I'm gonna give this a shot. I'm kind of on the fence on this one. And because of that, uh, I'm going to defer to the planning recommendation and, uh, recommend refusal.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kumerick. We have a motion for Mr. Kumerick to refuse the application. Someone to second that motion? Ms. Ruddock seconds. All those in favor? Opposed? We have a tie vote. All, and all support Mr. Kumerick's motion, so the application is refused. Now, on item number, uh, now to item number, sir, your application's been refused. Thank you very much, sir. Uh, go to item number thirty-four, A, B, and, uh, pardon me, item number thirty-five, one Velma Drive. We have one person registered to speak. That's a Sean, Sean Galbraith. Are you there, sir? Can I get your full name and address, please? Sean Galbraith?
My name is Sean Galbraith. I'm a professional planner here on behalf of the application.
Yes, thank you very much, sir. Uh, I noticed that we have, um, a number of comments on file with your application. There's a recommended conditions from Urban Forestry. There's a Transportation Services, uh, condition, uh, right, pardon me, report from the twenty-ninth of June. They appear to have no objections to that.
The meeting seems to be gone. I don't see anyone on my, on my screen.
I'm sorry. Mr. Galbraith, are you there? I just...
Hello?
You can't see, you, you, you're not getting a video feed?
I can now see you. I'm, I'm back.
Okay, you can see us.
I'm not sure what happened. There was a, I can totally see everybody now. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Not sure what happened there.
Okay.
I am.
Okay, thank you. Uh, as I said, there was, um, like I said, Transportation Services, a report of the twenty-ninth of June, no objections. There appears to be no comment from City Planning, but they did recommend a deferral on a previous application on, uh, in January of twenty-twenty-one, but they've made no comment this time. So, in terms of the actual application, I think it's pretty clear what you're asking for in the variances, but, uh, with respect to...
I think so, too.
Sir, just, um, is there anything that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material that we have before us today? Have you had any discussions with City Planning?
Yeah, so the revision, um, is the result of City Planning. We essentially removed a pergola at the back of the property, um, from the original application. And that was, uh, that, that satisfied, uh, planning's concerns, and they haven't commented here.
Okay, thank you.
Essentially, what it is, what remains is a second-floor top-up.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does the, uh, committee have any questions to the speaker? Uh, can we get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kumerick? Mr. Kumerick?
Oh, go ahead, Mitch.
You've lost, you've lost us?
No, no. Oh, okay, I'll, I'll, fine. I'll, I'll, I'll move, I'll move approval. I believe it meets the four tests and it's minor. Um, I would like to make it subject to forestry conditions, one and two.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kumerick. Someone to second that motion? Ms. McCloskey seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's unanimously approved, uh, subject to urban forestry conditions.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Item number thirty-five, one Velma Drive. I have one person registered to speak. That is Sean Galbraith. Are you, I'm sorry. Just did that one. Number thirty-six, two Wilmar Road. I have two people registered to speak. The agent is an Anthony Abate. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair and committee members for hearing us.
Yes, can I get your full name and address, please?
Yep, Anthony Abate, sixty-three Pioneer Lane, Woodbridge, Ontario.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, I noticed that there are a couple of reports on file with your application. There's one from City Planning dated the fifth of July. They had no objections to your application, provided that the proposed development is constructed, is illustrated on the site plan and front elevation drawing submitted June second, twenty-twenty-one, held on file by the committee as it relates to the proposed building length, which includes a garage bumpout. There's also a report from Transportation Services, uh, dated July fifth, which indicates they have no objection, provided the site plan is revised to illustrate removing the existing hedge within the Wilmar Road right-of-way. And I just wanted to ask you, sir, did you want to remove that hedge from the right-of-way? Were you proposing to do that?
Yes, we are.
Okay, all right. Thank you. If you, we have one other person registered to speak on your application, sir. So if you could give the committee a, uh, brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Sure. Thank you for your time and, and thank you for your patience today. I'm sure you're all exhausted from a very long, uh, hearing day today, so I'll keep it very short and sweet. Um, we were, uh, back in March, we were, uh, requested to defer the application so that we could work, uh, better with planning staff and our neighbors who opposed the application. We have since spent the last several months doing so. We feel, um, we have, uh, satisfied all the city comments, as well as the comments that we received from the neighbors. The most fundamental aspects of the changes that we've done here since the, our first hearing, um, was number one, reducing the number of variances, uh, from eleven to now six. And we've also reduced the impact of those variances that were contentious to some of the neighbors. And there was three fundamental, uh, variances that we, uh, were looking for. And, uh, one of them was the front yard setback. Originally, we had it at about four and a half meters. We've since worked with planning staff to agree to an eight-meter front yard setback, which keeps in, in tune with the neighboring properties on Bluer. Um, we also had a, uh, issue with the balcony size on the second floor off the master bedroom. Uh, we have since reduced the balcony size substantially to only, uh, eight and a half meters squared, um, whereas before it was twenty-five meters squared approximately. And we have also faced the balcony so that it faces the rear as opposed to facing, uh, Wilmar, which was one of the, uh, the complaints that we received. And we have also reduced the building depth, um, as well. So, uh, you will note that we are, we do have a building depth of twenty-point, uh, five-two meters, but that is due to the garage extension, uh, just by having a, the nature of a two-car garage on a corner lot. Um, but majority of the house falls, uh, within an eight, eighteen-point-five-two-meter, uh, proper, uh, building depth, uh, carried through the ground and second floor. So, we are, uh, really within the nature of a lot of the variants that have been approved in the neighborhood. And, uh, we feel that we meet the four tests. We've satisfied all of planning's concerns, as well as our neighbors' concerns. But I'm happy to take any questions and, uh, learn if there's anything further from the opposing neighbor.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? Now, go to the next person on the list. I have David Jas, Jansma, or Angela Calvewen. Uh, are you there?
Uh, good afternoon. Yes, good afternoon, the Mr. Chair and, uh, members of the committee.
Madam, can I get your full name and address, please?
Uh, my name is Angela Calvewen. I'm in, uh, sorry, three oh nine, uh, three nine oh nine, Bluer Street West.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to give us your thoughts on this... Okay, thank you. If you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Yeah, unfortunately, I was too late to submit my letter of objection previously. That's why it's not filed there. But my objections were mainly to the, the front setback that I'm gonna get too close to the, to the road. This is a small road and a lot of neighbors walk in that road and with our kids to the park. And so we have to, because there are no sidewalks, we have to walk on the street. So my main concern is when they put their cars and go back, they will need extra space and, and that will reduce significantly, significantly the amount of space that people walking there will have. It's like, I'm afraid about, you know, with a big truck, for example, the person won't see people walking and they will be, to turn, they will need the whole space of the street itself. Because with, with a small, with a small driveway, they will need some space from the road. My other concern is our privacy. Our yard backs, what it will be, will be at the height of the balcony. And since the, the size of the, the height of, to the roof is gonna be increased and with a balcony that, it will affect our backyard. Like, we won't be like, you know, having privacy there because anybody walking in that platform, which is, by the way, like more than a hundred percent, they allowed size of four meters square will be, yeah, it's twice as large and it will be able to see our yard. Since the house is gonna be increased towards the south side, which is the yard and coincident, coincide with our backyard. I have been taking my daughter to, to take the bus for her school and they, they bus stops at that house. And when I, and when I put my, my daughters in the bus, I can see my house from there close to the driveway, so I can see the back of my yard. So imagine that from a balcony, a platform. Actually, it's more like a platform than a balcony. I don't know why someone needs such a huge balcony. If that would be the case, they could put a balcony facing Bluer, which doesn't affect anybody's privacy because it's a huge street. However, a neighbor that's not, is not here, but she will also be impacted because she's closer to them, but that's, those are, those are my concern. The height and that balcony that is more than a hundred percent the allowed size that, that, that will interfere with our privacy. Thank you. That's, those are my objections.
Okay, thank you very much. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll go back to Mr. Abate, are you there?
Yes, I am.
You heard the comments from the previous speaker, if you'd like to reply?
Sure, I can speak to her concerns and I thank her for her, for her input today. She, she is correctly noting that we, we have a small driveway access point before the property line to the front face of the garage. It's three point two-six meters. We do acknowledge that and Transportation also acknowledged it in their report stating that we have to really be cognizant about how we park vehicles on that area. I've done several laneway houses with garages of, of similar setback from property lines and you, you can in fact get a parallel, a parallel parked vehicle in that space, but we, you know, as representing the homeowner, we will be very cognizant of that and make sure that our vehicles are not hanging over and causing any disturbances. And we will be mindful of the bylaws that protect that interest. In terms of privacy, I'm not totally sure I understand the point. But we are providing proper screening from the, from Wilmar Road. I don't know how it affects her on Bluer. But we are using frosted glass balconies to help with any privacy measures on that balcony. I don't have anything further to say about that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion on this application, please?
I'll move to approve the application. It, I find variances minor in nature. It's four tests of the Planning Act and I think the applicant made a good attempt to revisit and reconsider the plans. Just, I guess that's conditional upon being tied to the plans per planning's request dated June second, twenty-twenty-one, as well as transportation's condition regards to being, the plans being revised to illustrate the removal of the existing hedge.
Thank you very much, Ms. McCloskey. Someone to second that. Ms. Ruddock seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's unanimously approved, subject to City Planning and Transportation Services committed, Transportation Services conditions. Can I get a motion to terminate the meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Committee members. Thanks for your patience. Ms. Ruddock, I am so sorry. I messed, messed up that comment on item twenty-seven on Wilmar. I really apologize for that. I messed up. I, I just, my-
No problem.
Weren't working properly, so I apologize. Thank you very much, folks. Thanks for-